Throughout history, African Americans have been the backbone of labor in America. From the fields to the factories, from the railroads to the boardrooms, their contributions have shaped the nation's economic foundation. The story begins in hardship. Enslaved Africans were forced to build America's economy without reward. Yet, even in the face of oppression, they demonstrated resilience, skill, and ingenuity. After emancipation, African Americans pursued economic independence, establishing businesses working in industries and organizing for better conditions. The formation of unions like the Brotherhood of Sleeping Car Porters, led by A. Philip Randolph, was a pivotal step in the fight for labor rights. The struggle for labor rights and civil rights were deeply connected. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. stood with striking sanitation workers in Memphis, declaring, "All labor has dignity." African Americans were not just workers, but leaders in the fight for equality. Today, African Americans continue to break barriers in labor. From CEOs to essential workers, educators to engineers, they contribute to every facet of the workforce, paving the way for future generations. As we celebrate Black History Month 2025, we honor the labor, sacrifices, and achievements of African Americans in the workforce. Their determination has not only helped build our great nation, but continues to shape its future. Let us remember, recognize, and recommit to justice, opportunity, and progress for all.
Welcome to the Muskogee County School District. Creating and empowering futures together. This year, we're building stronger connections between our students, families, and community, ensuring every child has the tools to thrive in a rapidly evolving world. Cutting edge technology and hands-on experiences to prepare students for tomorrow's challenges. Every voice matters. Our diverse and supportive environment fosters belonging and collaboration. Our mission is to inspire and equip all students to achieve unlimited potential. From STEM to the arts, we're equipping students with critical thinking, creativity, and leadership skills for life beyond school. The Muskogee County School District is a beacon of educational excellence. We're all are known, valued, and inspired. We are proud to be named one of Forbes' 2024 Best Employers for Women and Best in State Employers. This recognition highlights our commitment to fostering an inclusive, equitable workplace that values diversity and supports professional growth. Our dedicated teachers and staff are passionate about helping every student succeed. We encourage you to get involved, stay informed, and help us continue making the Muskogee County School District a place where students don't just drain, they succeed.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our regularly scheduled Board Work Session, February the 10th. And today is the second hearing, I think. The first official hearing for the House Bill 581 statewide floating homestead exemption. We will open the hearing at this time in response to the rising values of property in the state of Georgia. The legislature's in the April 2024 Legislative Session signed into law House Bill 581, the statewide floating homestead exemption, and FLOST, which was approved by voters in the November 2024 election. This law provided for the property tax procedural changes, new local option sales tax, and local sales tax limit revisions, and a statewide floating homestead exemption. This law allowed for an opt-out provision to the portion related to the statewide floating homestead exemption. The Muskogee County Board of Education intends to opt out of the statewide adjusted base year ad valorem homestead exemption for Muskogee County School District. The district is having this public hearing to hear from concerned citizens on this matter. All concerned citizens are invited to the additional public hearings to be held here at the Public Education Center, 2960 Macon Road, Columbus, Georgia, on February 10th, which is today, 5 o'clock. The next one is February 18th, next Tuesday, at 12 noon. And then, again, February 18th, next Tuesday, at 6:00 p.m., just before our regularly scheduled board meeting. Among the reasons that the board intends to opt out of the statewide adjusted base year ad valorem homestead exemption is that the Muskogee County School District is already impacted by a countywide freeze on the assessed fair market values of homestead property and affirms that with the opt-out, all existing local homestead exemptions, including the local freeze assessment, homestead will remain unchanged. The intent to opt out follows a thorough review of the potential long-term impact on local taxpayers, school district revenues, retention, and local control, and provides flexibility for the future that is not afforded by the state exemption. Due to our local frozen assessment homestead, the statewide floating homestead is of no benefit to the vast majority of our homeowners and will be confusing and potentially costly to implement with zero benefit to the majority of taxpayers. Opting out keeps control locally so that we can always add a floating homestead similar to this in the future where the inflationary index would be set locally, not by the state. However, by opting out now, we foreclose that possibility forever. At this time, if there's anyone from the public who would like to ask any questions, please come forward to the podium. There will be additional meetings next Tuesday at noon and Tuesday evening at 6:00, if you determine you have any questions later. Again, any questions? All right, we'll close this hearing. We'll be back again for the second hearing, official hearing, next Tuesday. Do you want to... Thank you, Ms. Whitehouse. Ms. Whitehouse from the Tax Assessment's Office was here to assist with answering any questions. We'll see you next Tuesday. To the City Council to do the same thing. Do you know what the council is doing?
I don't know. They're talking about it.
Okay. Welcome to our Building Leaders, Building Leadership Team. If you're a principal, assistant principal, or anywhere on the leadership team, raise your hand. Thank you so much for all that you do. Of course, our partners, Alan Harkness from the Library and Mary Ann Richtner from the Museum, thank you so much for always being here. Tonight on the public agenda, Ms. Teresa Elamy. She won't be here, okay, maybe next week. That was all that we had listed for the public agenda. First up is the Education Committee, Ms. Buckner.
One, two. Excuse me. We have two items on the agenda, and the first one is an update on the summer learning experience. Dr. Smith is bringing that to us.
Good evening, Tim Smith, Chief Academic Officer. Just going to bring an update to you on where we are for this summer's, summer learning. And then, we'll bring a follow-up update next month on some additional progress on that. So, as most people are aware, we had ESER funding for the last four years, emergency relief funds because of COVID. Those funds have ended, and those are the funds we use to fund our summer learning experience for the last four years. Each summer for the last four years, we spent between $5 to $7 million, depending on the summer, per summer. About a quarter of a million dollars of that was on community partnerships coming in to do some enrichment activities for the students. So where we are now is going forward. This year, next year, we're pulling funds from a variety of locations over time to support the program going forward. And however, we're going to have to make some adjustments to the program. So the funds we're looking at using, we've got General Fund. We've got state pre-K grant, we've had that the last four years, and we will continue applying for that. And basically, we've been told that because we've been in that program for the last few years, if we apply for it, we are basically guaranteed to receive it again. Consolidated funds can be, will be used as well, and then instructional extension program funds. Our projected cost for this coming summer is $1 million. That does not include the money we'll receive for our Rising Kindergarten program, which is from the state pre-K grant. Our focus for Rising Kindergarten will be state grant-funded and directed, so they'll tell us what has to take place in that program. It's been pretty consistent from year to year, but we sift away for the grant details before we can say this is what we're doing with it. For current, our current first through eighth graders, we're looking at reading and math intervention. And then our current ninth through 12th graders, credit recovery. And then, we want to maintain the APIB camp that we've done the last several years for our high school students. Looking for class sizes for Rising Kindergarten program. That will be, again, state grant-directed. Our first through eighth graders, we want a minimum of 12 students in a class and a maximum of 15 students. And then, high school, minimum 20 and maximum 25 students. And that's to try to maximize on the dollars we will spend for the summer. Looking at doing a four-week program. We just, we talked through shortening the program and felt that a shorter program just would not be beneficial. So maintaining that four weeks, so it'd be that month of June. The Rising Kindergarten grant, the last couple of years, it went into July, and we anticipate that to be the same for this coming year as well, or this coming summer as well. Maintaining that Monday through Thursday schedule, four days a week. And we talked about the week of Juneteenth. The 19th is on a Thursday, so instead of having them come back for one day, we decided just to have that be a three-day week, and that would give the ones who are giving of their time this summer an extra longer weekend in there. We're scaling back to four-hour program to cover those focuses that we're looking at. With staggered times, hopefully, we'll have enough interest with bus drivers to be able to support that program. And we will know that later, but the staggered times will be to be able, enable us to schedule for that. Keep the, we'll keep the locations consolidated like the last four summers. We have not determined those locations at this time. And then, Transportation is currently working on gathering interest from drivers to see who's interested to work the program. As far as staffing, because it's consolidated sites, we feel strongly we still need to maintain the site directors, so that's not a load on the principal at that school that hosts. We'd have the teachers, we're talking to some other possible positions like maintaining counselor coverage for the summer, things like that. So we'll have more updates on staffing next month. Schools will ask us, they've asked us even over the last few years with summer learning experience, they asked us if they could still do some separate programming on their own. And we are going to allow that as long as it's supplemental and not conflicting with the, this summer program. As far as trying to reduce some costs, we're no longer going to do the time and a half. That was a luxury we had with ESER that we feel we'd no longer have that luxury. And then the community partners. We've shared the community partner information with the principals, so if there's things that they're doing separately and want to bring them in, they have that contact information and what that program and they can provide looks like.
Question about that.
Yes.
How much does the change from regular hourly wages for the time and a half? How much does that save us?
So, I can't give you a dollar figure. We can, and it's going to be hard to project, go into a half-day program, but you're talking about adding 50% of the cost to everybody that was working that was off-contract. We can get projections from...
I think that's something, I at least as a board member, would like to speak into. Because I mean, one of the, I know we don't have ESER, but we also built up our balance, whatever, the reserve, fund balance, thank you for, because of ESER. So I mean, I don't want to see quite such a, I mean, we still want the summer learning program to be something that they're excited to come do, that the teachers are willing to come and do, and not feel like we're kind of cutting it back to the bare bones, just my thoughts. I would very much want to hear about that difference in pay.
Okay. As far as next steps, we're going to communicate with staff and parents of programmatic changes compared to the last four summers. Wanted to work with schools to determine student need, so we knew what staffing needs to look like. Finalize summer learning staff positions, start recruiting staff, make adjustments to the app we use for students to enroll for summer learning, develop guidance on the learning materials that we would use. And then, got to finalize summer feeding sites and times. And then, like I said, come back with an update in March for you. Would like to have that kind of feedback because there's thoughts on that will impact discussions between now and that March update, so. We need to do that, no later than early March, we need to be putting it out there.
I think, I mean, I don't want to jump ahead, but I do think kind of honing in on the compensation will be important before we start recruiting, because I think that... I mean, to me, if they're willing to come for four weeks of their summer, they should get more than regular pay. But that's just one person, so we'll have to maybe figure out a way to talk about that.
I concur.
Before March.
Okay, we will get that.
I had a few other questions.
Okay.
Okay, it said minimum class size. I mean, if we had a grade that did not meet the minimum, we would still provide a class, right?
Yes, so, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, just making sure, that made me a little nervous. I think I just asked my other big question. I was curious, what was the budget for the summer learning program prior to ESER? I know that was before you were in that position.
I don't know that we could even compile that because it was done separately by school for years before that. So it'd be really hard to determine that.
Okay.
Surely, we have the expenses for prior to...
We, we could go back and look, but there's other, it's not just the tutoring that went on. They had other summer programming going on, so trying to delineate between the two. We can go back and pull what they spent, period, and provide that.
Currently, we're receiving about a little over $1 million in the 20 additional day funds. I didn't, haven't, I haven't gone back to look to see what we were getting prior to 2000, but the formula hasn't changed much, so I'm assuming it's about the same $1 million. And that was the funding that we had used for summer school, with the exception of those specialized programs that were being paid for through Title I.
I have a question about the budget. Did you say that for summer learning, we're putting aside $5 to $7 million? Was that only the first...
No, that's how much we spent the last four summers, each summer.
Okay, do we have a budget for the incoming...
We're projecting, we're projecting based on the program, programmatic changes are projected $1 million.
$1 million for the summer program? Is that mostly going to be for personnel?
Yes.
Okay. And will we still be able to provide the same substance during summer learning? I'm assuming that during that first year, when we spent the $8 million, we bought the materials and things like that that we needed.
Right.
So really, we should be able to provide the same substance and the same personnel if we have the money to pay for the people.
The bulk of the funds were for staffing. When we bought materials, we did not spend more than, we did not spend more than $0.5 million on materials. And then, the community partners were a quarter million dollars per summer, roughly. So, a good 80, at least 80% of it was for, just for staffing.
Okay, can I get a breakdown of the... Okay, can I get a breakdown of the original summer learning, where we spent the eight million dollars? And then can I get the projection of how we're gonna spend the one million dollars this year? Just to do a comparison and see what's missing, what's different?
Time and a half.
Also, in, in addition, you know, we, we also paid for vendors, I'm calling them vendors. Don't lump that in with the personnel, make sure that's separate.
Okay.
I have a question. This is just a general question before I ask about the summer program. Now, you just said 80% of the summer learning program was, the cost was 80. Miss Book, I'm sorry. All right, you just said the, the summer learning personnel, the budget, 80% of the budget was personnel. Now, isn't that true for our regular budget also?
Eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five percent.
That, that's just a safe estimate, that's without going back and looking at the numbers, giving you a.
All right, I just want to make sure that that's the same as what we're doing actually. We're paying more, eighty-five in a school, in a budget, most of the cost is the personnel. Secondly, will we be furnishing transportation with the summer learning?
Depends on the interest of, of transportation drivers. So as long as we have enough drivers interested, then yes.
Do we have drivers interested? Have we, previous, in previous years, have we had drivers interested?
We have, and we are concerned with interests with time and a half, not paying time and a half. We have concern with interests.
Okay.
So everybody got time and a half before?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, just my basic math, you know, I like math. Even if we paid time and a half off of a million-dollar budget, it would only be 1.5 million. So I'm trying to figure out what the other big differences are from that seven to eight million. Are we just thinking there will not be as many children and we won't need as much staff?
So the last four years, we did not, the, the target was remediation and enrichment. And it was just open, if you, if you registered your student, they could come. This would be more targeted to need rather than just wanting to come. And the reason is that that five to seven million per summer, that's just not sustainable. Now, if we want to, if you want to give us direction to up what we're gonna spend on, we can modify a program for that with them, that's no problem. We're just trying to think of something that could be sustainable over time, so we're not just going back and forth, back and forth with what we're providing.
I think that from the previous presentations, that we were making a lot of effort in extending registration deadlines, trying to encourage parents to participate. I think after you meet the targeted students, if there is someone who wants to come, if they don't meet that criteria for who you're targeting, I think we should let them come.
I concur.
We can do that.
In that way, all of the pushing that we were doing, trying to recover the lost learning by, you know, really trying to focus on everyone participating in the summer learning program. If you, if you hone in on your targeted population and then the ones who enjoyed it or, you know, parents want to, want to send them, to allow them. That's what I would ask you to consider as you prepare to come back with, with an update.
So how many people, we talked also about a class size. So for the summer. So how many, what, what's, what's a class size for summer learning?
For elementary, we're looking at 12 to 15 in a class. And then elementary, middle, and then high school, 20 to 25.
Twenty, twenty-five. So high school is like recovery, isn't it? Okay, so in the elementary class, Mrs. Lori just said, so if, let's say, wait, let me go to this. See, where were the classes? Have we determined what schools will?
Not yet, we need to know where the summer feeding sites are gonna be, so we gotta collaborate with the school nutrition and, and plot around that.
Okay, so are y'all trying to get like the class sizes to determine maybe schools where, let's say you have 12 to 15, 10 students at this school and 10 schools here, 10 students there? Would you be trying to designate students in, at schools where there are, or at sites where there are spaces?
Can you rephrase that?
Okay, so let's say we have three elementary schools we're using. We have a class tar, a class size target of 15? Okay, suppose we're, we. I think we're, so we have. Yeah, I said, I, I, my question was how many schools are. So, so when we learn the designated schools, I already know that, because we don't have enough students to be at every other school. So let, let's say we have three designated schools, okay? So what I'm asking is, you had just told Ms. McRae, we will have a class for if, if the class size didn't meet the appropriate or the designated class size. So I was saying, if we had three sites and maybe at the three sites, we had two or three, let's say three classes that didn't meet the site maybe, had maybe said 10 or 8. Would we be trying to relocate students to meet the class sizes at different schools?
No, no, we would keep, if, if these five schools are gonna be at this site, that's where they would attend, we're not gonna move them to another site.
Okay.
But with the numbers we had, I mean, we had, over the last four years, we had, depending on summer, 5,000 to 6,000 students participating. So I don't, I don't anticipate us having an issue of at least making one class on every grade level at a site. That should be easy to do.
So I was just thinking also that while you're making your plans, you know, maybe your plan is not in, in, in writing yet, because there seems to be a lot of concern about that time and a half.
We're presenting this to get your feedback now, so as we go forward with our planning. So that's something we can certainly do, and we certainly, there are some other things with the fund balance we're gonna talk about going forward, but certainly we can do that. We just want to start with the minimum we have to do, and then we can increase as we need to.
Absolutely, okay, that makes sense.
But we also want to look long-term too, for sustainability. We don't want, you know, so it's that, finding that sweet spot, if you will.
Absolutely.
I just have a quick question, and I'm sure you covered this before. Can you tell me a little bit more about the AP camp? Are they reviewing to prepare the kids to go into AP or to pass the AP test? Tell me a little bit more about that.
It's a, there's prep activities to kind of gear them up for what they're gonna experience in an AP course or an IB course.
It's like previewing.
Right, and that's a, that's a two-week camp rather than all four weeks.
Okay, perfect, okay, thank you so much.
You get a lot of their reading assignments or whatever it might be related to the course in advance, can start working on them, know the expectation of, of the level and depth of, of learning that's required. And then get them some forethought as to what they have to prepare for, level, what we call DOK, depth of knowledge.
I've got a question, please. Tim, when you, choosing the children that can go, because it sounds like it is a pick and choose to a degree, how are you picking these children that, that will qualify to go?
So we would have to set criteria, and if we don't do time and a half, then we'd, we'd have to do some kind of survey of who's interested in working and see what our capacity is to serve number of kids. And then set criteria for qual, you know, who qualifies for the need the most.
Y'all want to have a first-come, first-served on the children, you're hand-picking on them, basically?
If we keep this approach, no, we would not be first-come, first-served. We would be targeting students of, based on need. And then, you know, if, if, let's say I, I need to go, if my mom doesn't want me to go, then we would move on to somebody else on the list and offer the opportunity.
Thank you, Tim, appreciate you, sir.
May I just ask the board for your consensus, if I may, regarding, I hear quite a bit of feelings about the time and a half for all personnel, is that what I hear you saying? Can I see a, can I go down, Ms. Frey? So that's a consensus. Well, we're gonna build the budget around that and we'll bring it back to you in March.
Just so he can know how to prepare.
Right, we don't have the budget for it, that's everything.
So.
They were saying we had that.
Yes, so we'll build. We have a consensus then to build a planned budget around the time and a half for all personnel, and then we will bring that back and share that information with the board. Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, and our next item, and I see Mrs. Thomas is already coming, so. Update on CTAE programs.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Thomas and I'm a Senior Director of CTA Steam and Robotics. It's my pleasure to present an update on CTAE to the board and the community. I want to remind everyone, of course, we already know what the mission of Musco County School District is, to inspire and equip all students to achieve unlimited potential. And in CTAE, we feel that that is a central focus for what we do. We consider ourselves to be the engine behind that and providing opportunities to inspire students as well as equip, equip them to be contributing members of the community. And with that said, we are very future-focused. We're always looking toward the future and helping our students to move through their transitions through school as well as post-graduation. So our strategy is to make sure that we allow students to be exposed to careers, explore, engage with employers so that they are equipped for the future. And there are lots of ways that we do that, and some of them are listed there. And I just want to point out, just because it is this week, I love my future week is this week. And that is a time where we set aside through all of our schools, K, pre-K through 12, to focus on the future, because the future is always positive and you can always make cha, choices that will build a positive future. In doing that, in providing these opportunities for students to be exposed and explore and engage, we hope that they are equipped for employment, enlistment, enrollment, or entrepreneurship upon graduation. And just a few of the numbers here, right now, we have 124 middle and high school teachers. We now have two career-focused elementary magnet programs, because now, well, as of right now, federal money can be spent down to the fifth grade for career education. We have 10 different middle school programs, CTA programs, 35 different high school pathways and a 1.54 million-dollar operating budget. So that does not include obviously personnel expenses. Just to give you an idea of how CTAE has grown over the years, here's a snapshot of where we were in FY17. I came into this position in FY16, but of course, the budget was already set at that point. So in FY17, you can see that we had nine staff members. And over the years, we actually have gone down in staff members. So we're doing all the things that you're about to see with fewer people than we had at the beginning. So hopefully, maybe one day that might change, because there's a lot going on. We have 124 now, I already said that, but we have grown by 31 middle and high school teachers. And then also, what's down there that's really, really important is that we did not have any elementary-focused magnets at that time, but now we have two. And then you can see that our budget has grown tremendously. So if you're looking at teachers, it's about 33% more teachers. If you're looking at budget, it's about 37% more budget that we're managing with our seven people. I want to take you through the elementary school programs that we have. Of course, our two elementary CTA-focused magnets are Britt David and Downtown Elementary. Britt David is really a crown jewel, not only because Britt David, we know all the good things about Britt David, but it is, as far as we know, the only CTAE-themed magnet school in the United States. I'm sorry, not in the United States, in the state of Georgia, sorry, going too far. And so we're really proud of that. Our state CTA director is gonna be visiting us in May to see some of the things that CTA, how CTA is being integrated within elementary school setting. So the way this table is set up is we have obviously the name of the school, a little bit of information about what they offer. That third column are extracurricular or co-curricular. You'll see co-curricular as we go on through high school, some things that are offered. And then the last column, which is the most important really, is what are these students getting out of this experience? What are they bringing, what are they taking away that they can take to the future and allow them to be, build a better future, a more positive future for themselves? So again, we have two elementary-focused CTA programs through CTA elementary schools, but we have many more elementary schools that are touched by CTAE through Amazon Future Engineer Boot Up, which is a computer science training that's offered to several of our elementary school teachers. We have Cyber Inspire, which is a new program with Aflac, where they're going out to our elementary schools and teaching students about cybersecurity and trying to inspire them to go into that kind of career. And of course, again, I love my future week, which is celebrated across the district. As we get into middle schools, we'll take these a little bit at a time and I'll try to go through this rather quickly. But again, it's the same setup as far as the table is concerned. We have our, the programs that are offered at that middle school, the extracurricular or co-curricular, and then what they're going to be learning or what, what skills they're gonna take because they participate in that. I do want to make a point that when it comes to the CTSOs, which is Career Technical Student Organization, which on this slide are HOSA, Skills USA and FBLA, those are co-curricular, which means that the teacher can integrate those lessons and those activities within the school day. And that's what makes CTA a little bit different than the academic areas. You know, a student can choose to be in, you know, Science Fair or Academic at the Catholic, but that requires after-school activities. And I'm not saying the CTSOs don't, but the good thing is they can, the teachers have permission and are encouraged to incorporate the, the CTSOs within the class period day, instructional day. The next three, four schools are there, Double Churches, East Columbus, Fort and Eddy, sorry. And one of the things I want to point to on this slide are where you see the asterisk next to career development at Eddy and Fort Middle Schools. We're excited to be piloting something again that is not, as far as I know, done anywhere else in the state of Georgia, where we are building back a career-rotation-type course within the middle schools. So basically, those students that are, should be exposed to all the career clusters by the time they finish that program, if they take it in sixth, seventh and eighth grade. I'll give a little teaser, we're working on a really special project at Baker, I'm sorry, Eddy Middle School with Beable, where they're gonna get their own Beable specialized classroom. They haven't come up with a name for it yet, but we'll certainly invite you to see that when it's all set up. They're gonna have, basically it's gonna focus on connecting their Lexile levels to the careers that, that connects to. So there'll be a lot more information about that coming, but I just wanted to tease that. Our next middle schools here, Midland, Richards, Rothschild and Veterans round out the group and you can see the courses that they're offering. Veterans is the only school right now that's doing artificial intelligence. That is a pilot program. Artificial Intelligence Curriculum for Middle School has not been officially released yet. So Veterans is actually in the process of helping the state build out that curriculum. So we're really excited for Veterans to be on the cutting edge of that program. So you might have any questions about any of the middle school offerings before I go on? We'll move into the high schools now, and the high schools, there's a lot more going on in these slides. And with high schools, what you have is career pathways. And a pathway are three sequential classes that, you know, increase in intensity, where a student, when they complete that pathway, will be able to sit for an end-of-pathway assessment. If you're, of course, you all hear a lot about end-of-course tests. We give end-of-pathway tests at the end of the three courses. And I have some end-of-pathway data coming up a little further into the presentation. But you'll see here, all of the CTA pathways that are offered at all the high schools. Of course, everyone's attention is always drawn on Jordan, because that is our college and career academy. But I want to make it very, very clear, and I have to do this with our teachers, because they, you know, they, we don't want them to think we only look at Jordan, we only give some. But I want to make it very, very clear, and I have to do this with our teachers because they, you know, we don't want them to think we only look at Jordan, we only give supplies to Jordan. We have CTA programs that are very vibrant, vital, producing potential employees at all of our high schools. We have some very impressive programs. I won't, I'm not gonna even call them out because then they'll say you like somebody better than the other one. But I do want to say that one of the things that we're really proud of too is that we also offer the teaching as a profession or education as a profession. So we're trying to build our profession at the same time as well. Okay, and this is the last of them. On this slide, of course, we have Kendrick, Northside, Shaw, and Spencer. And you can see just the full range of, we cover all of the career clusters that are recognized by the U.S. Department of Labor through these pathways that we offer at our schools. And you can see all of the CTSOs that are operating. We actually have forty-four CTSO chapters in our district. And that is actually our biggest line item expense on the budget. We are going to spend in excess of, let's see, we're probably gonna hit a hundred thousand dollars on transportation this year for all of our CTSO activities. And we're going to exceed sixty trips. And when I say sixty trips, that's individual trips. It does not mean sixty buses. It's probably more closer to two-hundred. So that's why the cost is so high and that's our highest line item. Because we do provide transportation for these students to go on their regional, their regional state and sometimes nationals. They qualify those experiences where they're competing in their pathway. So you could have a student that's competing in biomedical or a student that's competing in plumbing. And if they make it all the way to nationals, they can earn scholarships and that sort of thing, as well as cash prizes. I had referenced before the end-of-pathway pass rates. In the state of Georgia, we began giving end-of-pathway exams in two thousand, FY twenty-eleven. So I went ahead and put everything on there. You can see the years where we did not test due to COVID-nineteen. And there was a, you know, you can see where it was increasing. Like, we started out at twenty-six-point-nine percent and then we got to a high around, when FY twenty-fifteen of almost fifty, well, that was actually the high was the year before. But then we went to a block schedule and we experienced, you know, a decrease in the number of students in the pathway as well as, you know, decrease in the pass rates, you know, because the schedule changed. We were used to block scheduling. You had to go, you know, change to a different schedule. But we're back up again. So as of last year, we were back up to fifty-seven percent pass rate. So we're really proud of that. And what I, before I leave this slide, I just wanted to say too that an end-of-pathway assessment, in a lot of cases, is not a state-created test. It is an industry-recognized credential, which is the same test that someone who is thirty-five years old would take. So students who are in healthcare, who are doing, studying patient care, they're sitting for their boards to be state-certified as a C and A. You know, kids are taking cybersecurity, competency security plus. And of course, we really want them to go into cyber. We've experienced that ourselves. So that's the same test that any person would be taking, whether they're a student or not. So to have a fifty-six-point-seven percent pass rate is more impressive than you would think. I wanted to give you some.
I'm really glad that you made that distinction because I think that's really important to know that they're taking the same test that adults with, may have some industry experience are taking. So, and our students are just, you know, having the classroom experience. And so I think that is, that is remarkable and I appreciate you highlighting that fact.
Thank you. And I wanted to give you some sample pathway data. We'd be here into the, into the night if I went through all thirty-five pathways. But I just wanted to bring some out just to kind of give you an idea of what these students are gaining from completing a CTA pathway. So biomedical, which is offered at Northside, they will take the NOCTi Biotechnology exam. That exam, if a student scores, I believe, a seventy or above, it is three hours of college credit. Also, we're gonna give the base exam this year, which is, stands for Biotechnology Aptitude and Competency Exam, which is additional, is, eh, is an additional credential. So the state gives us lists of tests that we must give, but then there are other exams that the teachers recommend or employers recommend that we give them, that we are allowed to use our Perkins Funds so that they can have additional industry-recognized credentials that will help them either, you know, go straight into work or will help them when they go to college. Because again, kids that are taking CTAE classes are not necessarily the ones who can't do. I know a lot of times people think that, well, we need CTAE because everybody's not going to college. We need CTAE because every student will work. And if they go to college with an idea of what they're good at or not good at, with some credits under their belt, they'll be better prepared. So I don't want us to be thinking about career tech and think, thinking, okay, our AP students don't need that. You know, some of us know some AP students, some of them have, I have some that live in the house with me. And they need career tech because I'm not gonna, I don't want to spend my money on things that they're not good at. And that they, so we helps, career tech helps narrow it down. But going back to this, we, the number in the third column, which is the number of pathway completers, this is last year's data. So we had twenty-nine students that completed the biomedical pathway and twenty-eight of the twenty-nine were certified. So that gives you an idea. It's not always a rosy story. I wish it was twenty-nine out of twenty-nine and all that, but you know, that's a good pass rate. When it comes to carpentry, the thirteen students, the reason why there's an asterisk there, thirteen students passed the Carpentry Skills Connect, but all of them received their OSHA-ten card. And we have a, one of our partners, I wanted to point out, David Hawkins from Freeman Associates, and he can probably attest to the fact that it helps out if the student comes and they already have their OSHA-ten card. Financial Services is there. Of course, that's an important industry in Columbus area. I already mentioned patient care. And then, of course, welding is another important field and it has a strong pass rate there. But we have similar data as available if you're interested in all thirty-five of the pathways.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Could you tell us what those acronyms were for, it helps for the O S, OSHA?
OSHA, I'm not sure what OSHA stands, Office of Safety and Health Administration. Yeah.
Okay, and then let's go down to the financial services.
NOCTi is the name of the company that, that is, that gives that test. And I couldn't tell you what NOCTi stands for. Which one? That offers? We offer that class at Shaw, Carver, is it just Shaw and Carver now? Just those two schools? No, Hardaway, Hardaway, Shaw, and Carver. Have that class. Speaking of partners, these are some of the partners that we have. We don't, all of them aren't listed here, but I definitely wanted to put some of the big ones on there to let you know that we are working with them. We stay in contact with them all often. That's a lot of what my day is, consists of. And so that we know what they want, what they need. And then also, they give back to us by giving students work-based learning opportunities, job shadowing, letting students take tours and that sort of thing. Because it gets very real for the kids when they see and they can see that, oh, my, my teacher was talking about something and I can see how it's connected. So we work with all of these companies. And kind of in that same vein, you know, Georgia is the number-one state to do business for the eleventh year in a row. So in May of two thousand and twenty-four, Governor Kemp signed a bill to create a high-demand career list. And what that list is designed to do is to give us some direction on what we should be focusing our education on, or even for economic developers, what they should be focused on in terms of, you know, types of businesses to recruit to the state. So they carved up the state into twelve regions and we are the River Valley region. And from that, and they've already released a high-demand career list. And we're going, well, the Georgia Department of Education is gonna use that list and they're gonna produce a high-demand CTAE pathway list. And so basically saying, okay, these are the careers that are the hot ones or the most in demand, highest paid, and these are the pathways that line up to that. We're gonna get that high-demand pathway list in March. That's gonna be the state list. And then when we go to our summer conference in June, they're gonna give us our regional list that we can work from. And what does that mean for school districts? School districts will be incentivized to offer those pathways because students who complete a pathway in one of those high-demand CTA pathways will count as one-point-five in the denominator for career readiness or readiness instead of just one-point-zero. So that's very, are gonna be great news for our schools because they can obviously boost up their readiness CCRPI score with that. But what does it mean for our students? Well, that means that a student has already competed, completed, right, a high-demand CTA pathway. So they have some skills that they're gonna bring either to their post-secondary institution or to their employer. Now, if they take more advantage of CTAE and they actually pass the EOPA, then they're gonna have some industry-recognized credentials. They might have some credit hours that they can use for college. So that's gonna help and boost them. Now, if they participate in one of those CTSOs that I talked about before, FBLA, Skills USA, they're gonna have some leadership experience. They're gonna have, to have made a resume and presented, you know, information in front of judges and maybe even have some medals or some cash prizes. And then if they do the pinnacle of CTAE and they actually have some work-based learning experience while they're in school, they're actually gonna make some money, we hope, right? And they're gonna have some connections, done some networking so that they can have a brighter future. And so just to make that point even clearer of how important CTAE is and how it can be used, these are the graduation rates, the most recent, which I think, believe is two thousand and twenty-three, because we always get it a little bit later. So if you're, if you round like I do, I think that's a hundred percent of the CTAE pathway completers that graduate. And not only do they graduate, but if they take advantage of all the things I mentioned, they will graduate with all of those skills and they'll take those skills and those experiences into their future. I just want to close, I'm turning around to the closing now, and I just want to say that every able-bodied student will eventually have a job or career. If they go to college, that's great, but they're eventually gonna have a job or a career. And so we need to be talking to our students about their futures and about careers so that they can start to envision what that's gonna look like for them and they can start aligning some of their experiences so that they're ready. These are some of the students that I'm talking about, some of the teachers that have participated in CTAE. There's a lot of stuff here. We have robotics represented. In the upper left-hand corner is a Northside student who won gold, which means at the National Conference for FCCLA. We have JRTC. We have students that have participated in Cyber Start America. We have the AI for Georgia, teachers from Veterans down there. We, lots of things that are showcased here, a lot of diversity that you'll see. And then in the bottom right-hand corner is our staff, some of our staff members in CTAE, which I'll recognize in just a moment. And we received, for the second, we renewed our Economic Development Partnership District designation, which says that we have shown and can prove that we, we are connected to employers and we are definitely working on getting our kids ready for the future. So I want to recognize some of my team that's here. Y'all just wave your hand. We have Amanda Toley, who is a regional CTA supervisor.
Stand up so we can clap for you.
Okay. Amanda Toley. Cherie Tovey, who is our STEAM Program Manager. And we have Sonya Lewis, who's our, one of our newest supervisors. And some of our other folks couldn't be here tonight.
Well, good job. Congratulations.
And just want to remind you, February is also CTA month, so we're celebrating, not only I Love My Future Week this week, but we're celebrating CTA, CTAE all month long. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Everything is good. I have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I said, maybe, oh, I'm sorry, real quick. Even maybe for Dr. Lewis. At Columbus High, they don't have a lot of career tech stuff. So back in, when my daughter was in school at Columbus High, one of her first friends took an architect class at Jordan. But she had her own car and she drove to Jordan every day. Is that possible now?
That's on the table. We're looking at that to, I don't want to say too much without the boss's approval, you know, but, but that's on the table because, you know, there's a lot of dual, you know, Jordan is a College and Career Academy. So they, they push pathways and they push also dual enrollment. And what's happening is that when it, there's, kids are, you know, kids are leaving Jordan because they should be, right? They're doing their, the dual enrollment. So we have some excess capacity is where I'm getting to. So we have classes that have space. And so we're, you know, we spent all this money on renovating Jordan and having all these great, all this great equipment and everything. So we're exploring the idea of allowing students to be able to come back and take classes part of the day. So that's something that is definitely being explored.
Okay, thank you.
I just simply want to say that this is amazing work. And I am super excited about the endless opportunities that we are affording our students. And I want to publicly just say thank you to you and your team for growing tomorrow's leaders and giving them many opportunities for their future. I also want to say thank you to those partners and those corporations who thought it not robbery to partner with us and to make sure that we are building a strong group of, a skill set
Yes.
that they will one day need in the workforce. So thank you for that. We appreciate it. I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Okay. The first one is, what happens if a student doesn't pass the pathway? Do they have to retake that class or is it just, is the test not a pass fail? It's just to tell them where they are in their skill set?
Right. It's, it operates differently, differently in CTAE because it is end of, it's at the end of three classes. So if they don't pass, actually, nothing happens to them punitive-wise. But we do offer students that are close remediation and then retest them. Because we want them to, because the benefit is they're going to get these credentials and they're not gonna have to pay for these tests. So that one, that cybersecurity one is four-hundred-and-four dollars.
Wow.
So we want them to pass.
Absolutely.
And we want them to have those credentials.
Absolutely. Okay, I was just making sure that there was no detriment to the student if they didn't pass. The other thing is, you mentioned that we lost two positions from the inception to now. What were those positions? Were they critical positions? And this is like a threefold. What positions did we lose? What is needed to sustain or improve the program? And then how much would that cost us?
Those are great questions. At the time, at the time when, when, when we lost those positions, we changed from a work-based learning, what I'm trying to say, district-level work-based learning model back to a school-based. So we lost that position. And then we lost the Youth Apprenticeship Coordinator, which was Tim Vincent. He went on to be CEO of Jordan. So we just didn't fill those positions. Now, since that, so we, we actually dropped a lot. And then we built back. We added the STEAM Program Manager and we actually added a fourth CTA Supervisor this year to just handle middle schools. Now, what I would love to have, since you asked.
Yes, I asked.
Is I would love to have a CTAE, like, Program Manager, similar to what federal programs has, because there is a lot of money to manage. Like, I know federal programs has a much bigger budget, but we have more transactions, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
And a lot more grants that are a part of that money. So to manage all of that is a lot. So that would help. And then another admin, like a clerk or something to assist with that. Because we also, all of those trips, some of those are overnight trips. So there's a lot of hotel reservations and, and, you know, just registration payments, all that. So those are the two positions that I would love to add back.
Okay.
Or have. They're not add-backs. They're actually just new, you know.
Okay. Thank you so much.
So I do have a question about when you're looking at elementary school and middle school, those partners in ed, do we also engage them with the CTAE exploration at those lower grades?
Yes. Of course, you know, we can't manage every partner-in-ed relationship, but when we have the partner-in-ed kickoff, I usually do a presentation at that. And we encourage them to do that. And we actually give them some guide, you know, there's like a, I want to say, two or three-page guide that, you know, has been offered to them to give them ideas of what to do with their partners throughout the year to kind of assist with that.
All right, very good.
We start our career at, in early elementary?
Ma'am.
We start career at, we introduce career education in early elementary.
Yes.
Right?
Right. I mean, I know pre-K, pre-K curriculum and I know Ms. Thomas, the other Ms. Thomas. You know, Community Health Helpers is, I know, a key unit that's in pre-K curriculum. And that's, you know, fire, you know, the, you know, learn about firemen and police officers and things like that. But that was one of the reasons why we started to have I Love My Future Week. But that was one of the reasons why we started to have I Love My Future Week. And I was remiss, not mentioning Student Services, assist us greatly with I Love My Future Week and all of the school counselors and helping to arrange all that and put those things together because they do a lot of, and the thing is, everything doesn't happen during that week. You know, it's just when we focus, when we highlight it.
Is that the old-school CAREAT week?
Kind of, yes, yes. And again, I want to just say that we do this all, you know, these schools are doing things. All these counselors are working hard and CTA supervises everyone all year round. It's just that this is a week where we just, we want to, you know, just shine a light on it.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Lewis?
You were already going to say something.
I'll take this opportunity to say what you usually say about our diplomas, full-option diplomas.
Full-option graduates.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Thank you so very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the Education Committee. Ms. Tillery? Up next, we have our Policy Committee. We'll come back to Ms. Tillery. Discipline Committee, Ms. Slone.
Madam Chair, there are no items for the Discipline Committee. Thank you.
All right, thank you so very much. Ms. Frey, Property Committee.
Yes, a couple of things I just wanted to highlight on the museum and library reports.
Speak into your microphone, please.
I've never been told I'm not loud enough. Just a couple of things to highlight on the museum and library reports. Thought it was interesting that the professional development for the middle school and high school English Language Arts teachers for object-based learning and then turned around and did observation education for the Mercer Medical School students. And if anybody went to the Old Baker High School, reminds me of Mr. Liebendorfer's English Observation Exams once a week. So that was, that was really neat to see. We're starting at middle school and taking it all the way through medical school. So thank you for that, Mary Ann. And on the library report, a couple of things. There was a young man that was able to learn American Sign Language, thanks to the North Branch, before marrying the only hearing person in his wife's family. So he was able to communicate with the family before the wedding. And I'm, you know, very supportive and sort of, you know, biased against, about the South Columbus Branch. So the Focus Program and the chess classes and chess lessons that are going on there and the Valley Healthcare Bus coming out once a month to provide healthcare in the community for folks who can't get to the clinic. So thank you for all that work, Alan. That concludes the property report.
Can I put a quick flag on how much I enjoyed Fiona Davis's speech? She was the guest speaker, author that came for their kind of annual gala. And it was right after the snowstorm, so that was very interesting. But it was a great event and something I always enjoy. Got some new reading lists from it, so thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Now, we'll circle back to our Policy Committee. Ms. McCray?
Ms. Tillery's on the phone, but there's a lot of delay and backup. So I'll go through this. Item 5.01, the resolution opting out of homestead exemption. We've discussed that earlier. I guess it's on the agenda to be voted on for action next month. I mean, next week, next week. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Will we have completed our three public hearings by then? I thought we had one for the 18th.
Yes, we'll have one, we had the one tonight. Then we'll have one at noon next Tuesday, at noon on Tuesday. And then one at six o'clock next Tuesday night. So by the time we get to this point in the agenda, we'll have had all three.
And then the first one wasn't the official one.
Tonight was one.
Tonight was the official.
The official one. Next Tuesday at noon will be the second one. And next Tuesday at six will be the third one.
And when do we vote?
That night.
Okay, that Tuesday.
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night.
At the regular schedule board meeting.
Oh.
I guess.
We don't have a meeting on Monday.
Right, right, right.
Okay, okay. Got it, thank you.
And I'm not the best at keeping up with local news, but can keep us abreast of what the City Council is doing? Because by then, they're going to have to have made a decision on, or at least what way they see.
I think they have to do three also.
They do.
So they have.
They had one today, earlier today, and they had, she mentioned she was going to one at six o'clock tonight. So they have a third one sometime this week, I believe.
Okay. All right, any more questions on item 5.01? 5.02, appointment of Audit Committee members. It's the appointment of, I think, myself, Ms. Chambers and Ms. Tillery to serve on the Audit Committee for the new 2025. If anybody has any questions or concerns. If anybody wants to take it over for me, they are welcome. Okay, 5.03, review board policy DG, depository. I don't know much about depository of funds. I'm going to shift this to Dr. Lewis.
This was the question asked for by Ms. Buckner to discuss regarding our banking. Last month, it was requested by Ms. Buckner to bring forward. We do have a policy that talks about us periodically going back out and looking at that from various perspectives. Ms. Bloodworth has some information on that. Kind of talked to you about how we've done that in the past and why we've been with who we're with right now. I will say that, just to answer one question, we don't have all of our banking done with one entity. We do have, for example, our bonds for East Plus with different entities. So it's not all in one basket, if you will. But, Ms. Bloodworth, maybe a little bit of background?
I know that I could go back and tell that in, starting in 97, was as far back as I could go. And we did put it out for bid in 97. We did it five years later and then five years later again. And.
So when was the last date, I'm sorry?
It was in 2000. I'm going to have to get that for you. I can't remember. It was 11, I think it was 11, 2011 was the last time.
When did Rob, when was Rob on the school board? I was thinking, it was. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I know each time that we went out for bids, Sanovis was the winner. And I think we had just decided that, that we were every year, and I don't know this for certain, but I think that that was what the decision was, was that they were always the winner. We were, it was not beneficial for us at those, at that point to go back out. If it is the desire of the board, we can.
Well, let me ask you about the pattern. Were we consistently going out every five years?
We were for a while, yes.
And then we just, the staff, y'all just made a decision to not worry about it?
The decision was, and we just have not gone back out.
Now, is that legal? What you mean, just like legal services? No, no, we take action on legal service. Every month, we do nothing for this. If we had decided to do that, some action should have been taken to do that. Everything in this budget, if we look down at what we're doing tonight, we're going to go by financial services. Everything, everything there is titled, purchase order, sole source.
Go back to your mic.
Sole, everything has a title. Everything that we do here is classified with a title. So our legal, we have a long-term relationship with our legal services. However, every year, we take action and we vote. There is, it seems to me, I don't know whether it's legal or not, it just seems to me, let's say, 10 years, like I said, since Dr. Lewis came, we've maintained the same bank. I have no problem with this bank. What I have a problem with is that we are having something for eternity. We're not doing anything about it. We can't, at every five years, we can say we're reviewing it or, we don't get any kind of financial reports from that bank, the bank that we use. We get nothing from it. Everything else we get reports on. Why are we not getting any kind of information? And why, how is it that we can have something for eternity here? That classification is, should be classified under the 10.04 Purchase Order Exception F. That's how it's classified. That's how it's been classified. But notice that on our 10.4, we get information about those. Why are we not getting information on that? And if we took action to make a change, why didn't we take action to make a change? We just can't say we started doing that and we just started doing something. We usually take action on stuff.
I have been continuing with the way things had been done prior to. I know, can't go with always, that's the way it's always been done. So if it is the pleasure of the board, I can send the, do an RFP and send it back out for bid, if that is the pleasure.
We do, we do need to make one distinction because the banking is going to fall under purchases of products and services and the accounting and the legal firm comes under professional services. So we do need to make that distinction that, that's why, that's why these products and services go out for, should be going out for bid. So what, where are we?
I was going to say, if it's the pleasure of the board, I will, I will go back out.
We have board members always talking about how we can save money. Now, if, if, if this is a way to save money, and I don't even, you know, I'm not even saying I think it should go out, but if we, if the board, we should have something in place, like even if you want to say we were reviewing it in so many years, but it's actually a 10.04, we have to address, say something to satisfy that this is not a fixture forever. It has something, that needs to be addressed, that it is not eternity that we have Sanovis as a bank. And the classification here, it is, it is a, it's a Purchase Order Exception F. And we need to do something even to clear it up, even if you, something has to be done to fix it, too. We can't just say we're just somebody and it's been done that way and somebody. And if you went back, and I'd like to know how far it went back because in my memory, it only, it went back when, I think, maybe when Dr. Lewis came. That's one. And before then, we had Mary's, Brenda Stories Bank. What was that name of that bank? Not Trust Company. It's true. We had SunTrust for, while she was here.
The only reason why you're remembering, and I can remember, because the board members who worked for the banks always abstain. But I guess, where are we, I mean?
So we've had different banks. I'm just saying that I don't, in terms of Sanovis, you know, it's in my community. That's an asset for me. It's the only bank that I can do full service in my community. But I'm just, in this instance, I think we need to do something to not saying we're just doing it.
I've never been under the idea of eternity. I guess I've thought of it somewhat like legal services in that if the administration saw some kind of difference, if they thought for some reason they were paying an amount that was not competitive, if they saw a sharp rise in expenses to where they thought, I mean, that's a lot of times when we bid things out is when we see a big increase in the person that was providing the services, then we'll go back to the drawing board. So to me, it was kind of more of a, if, if there was a reason, they would bring it to us. But otherwise, I guess it doesn't have to be voted on like our usual budget items like we do for hobbies.
But we have a system for that. We usually say that we're doing something maybe for five years. We're going to look at it, we're going to look at it every year. And if there's a problem, then we, but there's no system here with Sanovis. For what you are suggesting, we have a system for that.
Well, and I guess the big difference here, though, too, is just, it is a substantial thing to take on to change it. So an idea of changing every five years is now, I would say, would be very hard to do.
Everything is hard.
But, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm just saying, I don't think it's odd that we haven't. I always thought that they would bring it back to us if they had a concern.
Well, if I may, we also look from the standpoint of cost, which we have not experienced any significant changes in the cost or whatever that's alarming or anything like that. We also look at convenience for our employees. We got to think about, we got 5,000 employees and what's the convenience for them in terms of the number of branches and things like that? We have some people who do electronic.
Electronic banking is what's convenient.
But a lot of our people don't do electronic banking. Some still do it manually, the old-fashioned way and so on. So we take a lot of things into consideration. The policy actually speaks to it, says periodically. It doesn't give a specific date. If we want to put a specific timeframe on that, we can do that. That's up to you all to do that. If that's what you want to do, we can do that. But certainly at this point, we can take it, send it back out if I have a consensus to do that.
So the things that you are suggesting, the things that you just said are reasons for consideration to choose Sanovis. That's not a reason to have them, but these are reasons for the consideration once there is a proposal. You will consider that they have 12 banks. You would consider, and this gives them an up or an advantage on other banks, but it is not a reason to arbitrarily select a bank. And it is arbitrary because it's not being, it's not being, it's not being sent out, you know? And some of the other banks, you know, I'm surprised that nobody said anything. But now, if it's, I'm not necessarily.
I can't say nobody has said anything because bankers certainly ask about, you know, our process. And because it's been so long, I absolutely don't have any issue with going out to bid at all because this is a products and services and we bid out products and services periodically. I don't, I don't have an issue with going out to bid. It doesn't mean anything's going to change because we go out to bid because nothing changed before when you all were doing it every five years, nothing changed. So it doesn't mean that anything would change. It just means that we would periodically, like our policy says, periodically take out products and services to bid. That's, I mean, we do it on everything that are products and services and we, I'm in, I'm in favor of being consistent with that. And, you know, I just, it's just whatever the board wants to do. I just wanted to speak right now. I don't have a problem with following the policy.
Well, I think we should follow the policy. And the things that Dr. Lewis, you know, I don't have, like I said before, don't have any problem with Sanovis. Sanovis is in my neighborhood. It's the only bank that continues to be, that I can get full service in my neighborhood. So I don't have any problem with Sanovis. So it just occurred to me that we haven't done anything here with this. That's the only thing I'm saying. And if you could fix it in some way where there's some kind of timeframe on it to do it, or?
Can I ask a question? If we were to take this item and bring it before the board, and you're asking if the board members, perhaps the question is, is it time for us to bid out for banking? And if we vote no, Ms. Buckner gets her vote, it's on the record, but then we're not also changing banks unless, of course, the board thinks it's time to do that. I think that changing banks frequently would be a mammoth of a task and we would have workers spending more time balancing, reconciling, transferring, keying in people's account numbers that have to be direct deposited. And it would cost us more money to move it than anything else and more chaos and possibilities for error to do that. But to satisfy the part in our. But to satisfy the part in our policy that says periodically, instead of just automatically saying, let's take it out for bid, could the question just be, is it time to, you know, do a RFP for new banking service? And if we say no, then maybe not at this time. But that also leaves it open, so in five years, or ten years, or twenty-five years, if it is time, then we can do it at that time. We could say yes and then bid it out. I wouldn't be in favor of, okay, let's just automatically go ahead right now and bid out banking services.
I, I do want, I do want to be clear. I, I don't, when I say I'm all for going out for bid, I, I mean for it to be planned like you do every other RFP, to, to plan it. But I do, one thing I am certain of is in the financial world, which, that is not my industry. I just don't see the change being that hard and chaotic. I mean, no, I don't, because they put, they put something in place to where you have this one open while, you know, this one is, is making all the transitions, so that there is no opportunity for failure. It's just a matter of whether or not we want to follow our own policy. We need to just get, you know, we either need to follow the policy or not.
Or change the policy.
Or change it.
You need to change the policy. If you want to change the policies to have Sanovas our bank forever, then we can do that. Change the policy to have Sanovas our bank forever, we can do that. But now, you also need, this board also talks about best practices. Nobody came back, and I'm sure, you know, I'm, I'm not sure, but I believe the best practices is for banks to change. I believe now, I didn't do, I didn't do, I, I did, I did not do, I did not do a research.
I'm not advocating for changing banks. I'm advocating for bidding it out like they were doing. And whatever their process was, Sanovas continued to, to prevail. But at this point, we've just ignored it for the last thirteen, fourteen years. That's, that's what I'm advocating for.
And even if we say, this is the date, we, in five years or so, or in so many years, we're gonna bid it out, or we just need to fill in something there. We just, it's like, it's, we got this bank forever. And I don't, I don't know, our lawyer isn't here, but I don't, I don't know that it's legal. We need to change the policy or something. We're not following our own policy. We need to change the, do something to the policy to tighten it up or to fix it where. But I don't believe, if we, I didn't go about trying to research it in terms of seeing how other school systems do. But it seems to me that best practices are, it seems to me, and we always talk about best, best practices. It seems to me that we'll probably find, and we may not, but we'll probably find that banks rotate their, school districts rotate their, their banking system. Because it seems to me that that's, sounds like a best practice.
I think along those lines, it would be helpful just to know what other services we have out there and what our timeframes are for those as well. Because I feel like we have some others that kind of continue going, and so I would like a better idea across the board on services that get renewed without, you know, really a vote from us, and how often they are reviewed.
If you look at, we do that every, every school, every, seems that we do that every month, if you look down.
We don't send out an RFP for everything every year.
But, but how we do it is on the, if you look down at financial services, everything in the school district is classified a certain way.
I understand, but I'm just saying.
And if you look down at, if you look down and look at your school district and your financial, everything is classified. Purchase exception A, B, purchase, additional purchase, purchase, competitive bids. If we cling.
Well, I think Ms. Bloodworth understands what I'm asking, so I think we can get that information out.
Okay, and is there any way we can get, Dr. Lewis, if you can get us information? Because it seems like we're not going to settle anything here on this work session. Maybe we put it back on the next work session, and can we get information on how many, on school districts? How do they do, if they, how do they do their financial?
Okay, so, to be clear, so we're not doing anything right now, you're not directing us to do anything other than to do research on what other school districts do in terms of.
Whether or not they've changed their bank.
Whether they rotate, whether they change them or keep them, or whatever.
Because here's what you're doing, you're trying to get the best, you're trying to get best practices. What, what do most, what do people do? What do, what are the best practices?
Well, Ms. Buckner, let's, let's look at our policy.
We're not following it, okay.
Instead of what other people do.
Yeah. But, but I, I, the reason, I want, I wanted to address one thing in, in terms of when I, when I said that, because it sounds like somebody, it sounds like they were saying that it takes all of this to change, like it's a, like it's so much to change. And I'm just saying, if everybody else is changing it, why is it so much for us to change? That's, that's why I.
Okay, your process would be, what does it cost to roll from one bank to another? That's really your question.
If all of the rest of them do, if all the rest of them rotate, if all the other, if most of the other school districts rotate. Because there was some, there was some consideration that it's gonna take all of this to make these changes. So what I'm saying, if, if, if you, if we're finding that most of the other banks change, have a rotation system, it must not be all of this great effort in the, in the world to make that change.
It's not a rotation system, it's a bidding house system. So that they bid out, and then if there's a new winner of the bid, they then change. It's not a periodic rotation.
That's what we call it. That's what ten point zero four is, purchase exception, and that's what it means.
But it's not a rotation.
Yeah, but it's a ten point four, as, as I said earlier, it's a ten point four. And if we look on the, our ten process, it's purchase exception F, which means, that's a RFP, request for proposal.
Well, that's the exception to having an RFP.
We have here. Is that a, a, some, a, a example of a sole source? Let's look at ten point six, because you got, you have everything. Ten point four, purchase exception F.
It would actually.
And then dash invitation to bid slash RFP, RFP.
That's the exception to getting an RFP.
Okay, but then you have a slash, and then let's open it up and see what we got. If we open it up and see what we have, we have request for.
It would fall under competitive bids.
Yeah.
If it came to the board, not under the exception to competitive bids.
But that's what you have, that's what it has here. It says, it has our, uh, request for proposal slash RFP slash competitive bids, or some kind of bid. Yeah. Competitive bid, competitively bid is another pro, is another, is, is ten point seven.
That would be where it would fall.
Ten point four is purchase order F, invitation to bid or RFP, request for a proposal. But it seems to me.
So this exception is making it fall under sole source.
But it says exceptions.
Right, this exception, yeah.
But then you still send out the RFP, RFP, or, or you bid it.
So I, again, to clarify what our direction is, is to bring back what other districts are doing, or to try and get a cross section of what other districts are doing. Is that correct?
As far as requests, as far as RFPs.
Right. As far as RFPs related specifically to banking.
For banking, for banking, relating specifically.
Specifically to banking, correct?
And, and the banking, and the banking procedures for trans, transferring over.
And estimated costs. Okay. Both in terms of man hours, and, because that's all time too, if you need to be thought of.
Right.
But I had also asked for other services to come under this exception that we don't do on a regular basis, kind of what our system is for those as well. Thank you. Ms. Bloodworth's got it.
She got it.
Yeah. Okay, is that clear?
When we bring, as we go through this, our agenda every week, you know, I was thinking that we bring everything to action. Even if we don't, even if we say, like, if some things we have for five years, we say for five years.
I hear you. You're saying that's not even on that, on the agenda for that, even though we're gonna continue with them. It's still not on the agenda. I, I hear what you're saying. That's why I say, I think, instead of looking at other districts, let's look at our own policy to see how we can update it or change it or whatever.
Well, that's.
Me and you both. Yeah, yeah.
So am I, am I still at the board's direction, getting the information that Ms. Buckner requested? Okay. And at this point, we're not doing anything else other than gathering information to bring back, correct?
So we can look at what we're doing.
Right, okay, very good. And Janice, you're clear? Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Where are we, Lord? Personnel Committee, Ms. Jackson?
Okay, we have one item, which is eight point zero one, it's the personnel. And there are four attachments. Are there any questions?
There had been a request from a board member regarding custodians.
Share.
Oh.
What's the question and what's the answer?
The question had been that there was a, saying disproportionate number of custodians that were resigning in this month's report.
And the answer?
No worries. So with the questions that were asked, asked about the custodians for this month, if you also look back, custodians do have some level of transience. But in this particular case, it just seemed like four came from one particular area at one time, but they, they all left for different reasons. There was no particular trend associated with it. We would like to delve a little bit deeper. I know that some conversations we've had is that maybe we can tie it to one thing. But the, the exit interviews, the exit conversations, and, and the feedback that was shared, puts them in different reasons in which they, in which they left. So there, there wasn't a specific pattern of behavior that, that indicated that we, we should be worried about any one particular thing. Are there any other questions? And, and if you want me to do a deeper dive, I absolutely will. There, there's always room for improvement. We're always trying to seek ways in which to hire right, find the right fit, and, and have longer term employment in, in our different divisions, so, and departments.
So did you say they, they came from the same area?
They happened to come from one school. One of the, one of the employees was actually before that. There were, all four of them came in at the same time at one particular school, but upon departure, they each left, two left for conflicts with other jobs that they had, one part-time and one full-time, and then two expressed concern that they, either it was a misunderstanding of what spread pay is. But they were working, they could work forty hours and get paid a certain amount, but there was an expectation that if they left early or came in late, that they would still get that forty hours, and that was not the case. That was what, that's what came back. That's what came back from the, that's what came back from the exit conversation.
Okay.
So they found something that worked with their schedule, is what you're saying?
Well, they're going to, is why they left, is to find something that was a bit more flexible to what their needs were.
Mm-hmm. Sounds strange to me.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Are there any other questions? Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cantrell, Construction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. Moving on to Agenda Item nine oh one, the contract awards for gym flooring. The school district, athletic and construction departments are requesting board approval to use Southeastern Service and Equipment to install the gym flooring surface at Fox, South Columbus, and Waddell Elementary Schools. The budget for this project is a hundred and ninety thousand. It includes material, installation, and contingency. The superintendent's recommendation award a contract to Southeastern Service and Equipment in the total of one hundred and ninety thousand for the replacement of the schools I had mentioned. Any questions? The only question I have, maybe somebody can answer. When you have some of this, do we bid these out, David? As far as, for stuff like this, is this on a bid contract or, okay. Move down to Agenda Item nine point oh two. The Hardaway Upgrade Project Change Order Number One. The school district construction department requests board approval for change order number one for the Hardaway Upgrade Project. The total budgetary impact will be two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. This, this change in order addresses the need to replace damaged asphalt in base due to the unsuitable soil underneath the existing asphalt. This change order does not increase the overall board approval budget for this project. The funding source is the approval owner's contingency. The superintendent's recommendation, super recommends approving change order number one in the amount of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred to address the damaged asphalt in base at Hardaway High School. Any question, ladies? If not, we move to the next one, Agenda Item number nine oh three. Project Delivery Method for Painting Renovation Projects. As part of the twenty-four East Ploes, the Muskog County School District will conduct renovation projects, which include upgrading the interior, exterior paint at multiple locations. The construction department is requesting the board to approve a construction manager at risk CM delivery method. The construction department will advise, advertise, and receive bids from construction companies to work with an architect to implement the construction documents. The superintendent recommends the construction manager at risk delivery method for painting renovation projects at said locations. Any questions? Moving to Agenda, Item number nine oh four. Painting Renovation Project Architect Selection. Sort of about the same, came from the two thousand twenty-four East Ploes. The construction department requests approval to use Neil Kendrick Kendust and Murray PC Architects Firm to evaluate, design, and oversee the renovation projects. The architects will, will work with numerous stakeholders, to include the school district construction department, design the renovations for the following schools at a cost to not exceed six percent of the final construction cost. The following schools, following schools we address with this project. Allen, Dorothy Height, Fox, Gention, Georgetown, Matthews, River Road, and Kendrick. The superintendent recommends approve architects Neil Kendust and Murray to evaluate, design, and oversee painting renovation projects at multiple locations. Any questions?
I have a question. On nine point zero three, there's not a list for the painting projects.
Ward?
The previous one.
Good evening. It's the, just the delivery method, but it's the same schools mentioned, nine point oh four. That's the, the painting schools that will be for this upcoming summer.
Okay, I was thinking you were gonna get to some of those other schools that are crying for paint.
Yes, so that will be, we'll bring back another set of schools for summer twenty twenty-six as we implement the district-wide painting plan. So there'll be another one coming back in the future for some other schools.
For the interior?
Interior and exterior, both interior and exterior.
For district-wide?
For district-wide.
Twenty twenty-six, oh, another year.
That's right, these for twenty twenty-five this summer.
My question, wait, no, I got a question too, sorry.
I want to clarify that twenty twenty-six is, I mean, the entire district will be done. Twenty twenty-five is the first year of the district-wide plan, which includes a portion of the district as per the needs they've been assessed for the highest priority. Twenty twenty-six will be the next set, twenty twenty-seven will be the next set. So the end of twenty twenty-six, we're not saying that all of them will be done. It's a.
Five years?
It takes five years for all the schools to be done.
We have never had in the district a industry standard rotation to get all of our schools painted, and we're trying to get to that so we can external, exterior and internally paint all schools on an industry standard basis. And we've never had that. That is exactly what we're trying to accomplish. Can't do them all at once, so we had to do them based on the department going out and looking and assessing which is the greatest need based on those needs.
So everybody said they have the greatest need, right? That's what you heard?
So the needed assessment was not based upon the request from the schools, but based upon the assessment that the plant services team did, along with our specialties in in the area. It's not based upon the school's request.
My question is, why do we need an architect firm to help us with painting? At point oh six percent?
That is an excellent question. So we're painting both interior and exterior structures, which includes minor renovations as well. And so in order to make sure that we're meeting the state requirements, we need to have an architect sign off on those renovations.
Otherwise, they're just going there and paint over damage, won't they?
Exactly.
Yeah, but I guess I'm just. Do we pay them by the hour? I mean, surely it's not a percentage of the construct. I mean, this says up to point six percent, which to me, they are, I mean, my husband's an engineer. They get, I mean, for this kind of project, I would be nervous to pay them a percentage. It seems like it should be a set amount for the work that they're asked to do.
So the architect, the architect fee is a fairly standard equation, and that is unfortunately, that is what it costs. It is a low cost associated with it because it's not a high-dollar project overall. It is just a project that we need the architect's approval to do the overall renovations.
And again, give me some more examples of what we would need in art when we're painting. We would need an architect. I mean, because it seems to me if we had some patchwork we needed to do, that could be singled out from the painting and paid for that, not tied up into our overall painting budget.
Well, we have a district-wide plan for to for the architect to make the schools look the same, you know, elementary-wise, middle and high school, to implement to implement the paint scheme throughout the schools, to be very similar. Plus, when we get to painting, there's more to it. You just don't walk up and paint the wall. They have to evaluate the the paint, what type of paint, what's the the walls that need addressing, the foundation work, you know, behind the paint. There's a lot more.
Construction company can't do that part?
Yeah, so.
This just seems like a lot.
But the main part for the architect is the for the for the state construction department to for the either reimbursement or it has to be addressed by the architect.
Wait, say that part again.
So there's certain things that we are required, the state requires us to have architect approval on. And so even though it may seem like something that's fairly easy that we can do, in order to follow that process and get our reimbursement rate back from the state, the requirements we have to meet. Like I said, it's unfortunate that we have to pay that cost for the architect, but it is a fairly low cost in the grand scheme of the project.
And we're getting all these reimbursed?
Not the total amount, but the projects that qualify for reimbursement, we're going to get reimbursed. It's not a total amount, it's a percentage.
Could we not just pay the architect for the ones we're getting reimbursed? I don't know. This just seems like a lot of hands in the pot. Sorry, I mean, that's what it seems like. And I get where it's necessary, but where it's not necessary, I don't know why we would do it.
In order in order to meet state requirements, so we can have reimbursement, it has to have architect approval. That is correct.
But we're not trying to get all of those reimbursed.
So yes, there's a percentage that the state does not reimburse the full amount. There's a percentage based upon the project. They give a percentage of the reimbursement. We want the full reimbursable amount back. We want all of our reimbursements that we can get back, and we can't get it back without the architect's approval.
Okay, so just to break this down a little bit. If we are looking at Allen Elementary, when we go in there, we don't know whether or not we will be able to get reimbursed. We have to see how much damage there is and how much reimbursed, or do we have an idea when we go into a school about whether or not it is going to qualify to be reimbursed?
We know when we go into a school whether or not the project will qualify for a partial state reimbursement. That is correct.
Okay, so there's some of these schools you know that they're not getting reimbursed. Or possibly.
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you off of the the first list of schools of any. Do you know? Are there any ones that are not going to be reimbursed?
Well, maybe that's something y'all could. We could do follow-up.
They all are. The ones that are for the first year, they will all be qualified for state reimbursement.
Well, I would be very interested going forward to kind of differentiate between those two. Because yes, it's very different if the state requires it. But if if it's not a requirement, I just don't want to get them all lumped in together and.
So if it's not a requirement for the architect, we do not engage architects. So most of our projects that we are able to do ourselves with the plant services teams, we do in-house. But if we require, if the state requires an architect stamp approval in order to get reimbursement, then we present that to you so we can have that reimbursement.
Some of this also relates to ADA compliance of the older schools that have got to be brought up to code for ADA specifications, things of that nature, which goes into which we may or may not know the most recent code to those things.
And maybe just in the wording, just don't say painting renovation, because it does sound like it's just being painted and that that seems like it's, yeah. So maybe just add in painting and other minor renovations or, yeah.
And also just lead just lead off with us being compliant with the state requirements.
Travis, I got a question. Who takes care of all our building permits when you're doing this? The construction firm? Do they pull all permits for the school district? Who's doing the job?
So the building construction permits are handled by the construction manager at risk. So will we submit the delivery method to you for a construction manager at risk? They're responsible for doing all that project.
And if something comes back wrong, it falls on their shoulders? If it was built wrong? Because we've had that happen before. I remember the Carver wall in the back was had to be redone, which was sixty, seventy thousand dollars, it seems like. And so that's who, but whose shoulder, because I know that was a debate, not a debate, but with the construction and building that wall, I think we sort of split the cost, but on stuff like that, if somebody does a job wrong, who gets the cost as far as that? Do we just bite it?
So that really depends upon what's wrong and the cause of the of the error. It's hard to say whose shoulder it falls on because it's not a one-size-fits-all situation. But when we have a construction manager at risk, they are taking on the ownership of managing that project on our behalf. But once they turn it over to us, we have now taken that. So if the error is not found into after after the we've turned over to us, then it depends upon what's a warranty issue or something else. So it can be complicated as to who's responsible for the error, but we'd go with the correct construction manager at risk format in order to protect us as much as possible.
Good. Yes, sir. Any questions? Any more questions, ladies? If not, the final agenda is nine point oh five, the February Construction Status Report. Mr. Ward will give a construction status report in our next meeting for review. Do y'all have any questions on the what's going on with all those schools, or do y'all want me to read it down or?
I think we all, I think we're ready to move.
Okay, that's good. Madam Chair, that's all for the construction committee.
Thank you, Mr. Cantrell. Next, we have our final committee, Finance Committee. Ms. Chambers? There we go.
Okay, ten point zero one is the budget calendar for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. The budget calendar is attached. Are there any questions, board members? Okay, hearing none, I'll go on to ten point zero two. This is purchase exception A and B. There are four different areas. They are all attached to your agenda. Most of this is the subscriptions, Renaissance Learning, Accelerated Learning, things of that nature. Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am. Okay, ten point zero four is purchase exception F, invitation to bid, RFP. And there are. Do you have a question? Go ahead, Ms. McCray.
The ten point oh two. The LinkedIn, I know what LinkedIn is, but I was curious, this is the twenty-one thousand dollars and what that gives us and what that does.
Recruiting to.
So what we have with LinkedIn is actually two different products. One is the recruiter seat that allows us to do passive recruiting. So if we decide, you know, to maybe we're not getting traction on a particular role, we can actually run a report for people who have that skill set, the number of years of experience. You put those parameters in, and then we can actually reach out to them because they may be in a position where they would like to consider us. So we can be more proactive in our approach for recruiting. We also have the LinkedIn career page is the site that has, we have LinkedIn already, but we also have the ability to promote our personality, who we are, celebrate our employees and and things like that. We have that process, but we also have tied to it sponsored ads. So we can actually take the ones, the jobs that we're posting on our LinkedIn site or other social media, and we can run it and place it higher and with more visibility on the LinkedIn, the LinkedIn career page.
And this is the, is this the cost for all LinkedIn services or is this?
All LinkedIn services, but it locks us in. That that's why I was moving rather quickly and don't have as much detailed information for you, but I can always get it. But the plan is is that they, if we address it now, we can lock them into three-year pricing for this year, and they always have an increase. But if if they're switching to a platform that will allow us a three-year contract, and we can lock it in for the pricing we have now.
And do we have data on how many people we get through LinkedIn?
I I can get that for you. I actually wanted to share the impressions and the whole deal, but this came up so quickly, I I didn't have a chance to get all of that for you, but we are going to have that.
If we're locking into three years, I would be interested to know that. And how many like college, I know this law, but how many colleges do we go out to and have like a career fair? I mean, we attend their career fair.
We have, we have a, pretty much every month, we were having something. We did have a transition in our personnel. So some of the places that we had locked in, we did not get to visit. We did not get to to we registered for a spot, but then you have to go in and and get the reservation, not just the reservation, but actually reserve a table. And because we had some transition in our leadership on the recruiting side, we didn't get to go to all of them. But we had well over twenty-five that were scheduled for the course of the year, and we were looking to get three just with us internally.
And those are in person?
In in person. And we have what we call we ambassadors. Representation from each of the schools will go. There's two people. We have a whole process that outlines what you get, what you take, what you're looking for, and you get to sell Muskogee County School District and your school. And often, it's because the administrators are the one who recommend that school. And then so they'll go and and so we'll register for it, and then we'll set them up to go so that we have representation from here. And it and it really helps. And if someone can't go, then our team will go.
Well, I'd love to, yeah, get a list of that too. That would be great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Board members, any additional questions about LinkedIn or any other items on ten point zero three? Hearing none, I'll move on. That was ten point zero two. I'm going to move on to ten point zero three. This is exception E. And this is material for Shaw High School. Additional purchases like equipment, materials, supplies, and there is a list attached. Any questions, board members? Okay, hearing none, I'll go to ten point zero four, which was the invitation to bid. There are three attachments. Any questions about those services? Okay. Hearing none, I'll move on to sole source and volatile purchases, ten point zero five. That is our gas, fuel, things of bus repairs, things of that nature. Ten point zero six is purchase order increases. And there is one for fire and safety, fire extinguishers. Ten point zero seven are our competitively bid purchases, and those are attached. This is software. Ten point zero eight is a copy of the new budgets for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Like our title three A. A mental health grant. Ten point zero nine is our budget adjustments. We see those each month. Ten ten are our donations. We like to thank the community for realizing that schools can't do it alone. Thank you for your donations. Ten point eleven are our financial statements for the month. We receive those monthly. Ten twelve, funds expended for student healthcare. And this is attached. We talked about this last month. But this is a breakdown of how that two million dollars will be spent. Okay, and the last one is ten point thirteen is our quarterly quarterly audit summary. And the notes are attached. Okay, hearing no questions, I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Green.
Thank you so very much. Just a reminder that our meeting is Tuesday, February the eighteenth, and we will also have a hearing at twelve noon. Hopefully your schedule permits so that we can come and conduct our second required hearing at noon, and then the third final hearing at six P.M. on next Tuesday. It's a holiday Monday, right?
Right, right.
President's Day. So we'll be out for President's Day and then be back on Tuesday. Anything else? Dr. Lewis?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Just want to take an opportunity to congratulate some of our teams. We had twenty-six wrestlers, boys and girls, qualify to go to state in Macon from the tournament we had regionally here and hosted at Carver. So congratulations to them. That's a great number for us to have sending to state competition in Macon this week. Also, this past weekend, three M C S D robotics teams shined at the championship stage in the first Lego League Georgia State Competition at Georgia Tech. Aaron Coe Middle School placed second in Innovation Project. Lonnie Jackson Academy placed second in Core Values, and Veterans Memorial Middle School placed second in Robot Design. So that's tremendous recognition there as well. And then on Saturday night this past weekend, we had the district honors band, of which most of the, or the vast majority, due to the size of our district, comprised the honors band. And interesting little side note, Dr. David Flack, who is the director of bands for activity, athletic bands at Florida State, the Florida State University, was the conductor, but interesting, he is a Shaw graduate, which I thought was our great connection here as well. So anyway, the kids did a great job. And so a lot of great things happening in the arts, in C T A E and robotics, and in athletics. So great weekend for all of us.
Can we get a copy of all of those accolades, either maybe on the website or? Seeing? Next week?
They come for next next week or next month, depending on their availability. We're coming to recognize them.
Okay, great. All right, thanks so much.
All right, all minds are clear. All right, move to adjourn. Wave goodbye. Thank you. Wave goodbye. Thank you.